That's the end.
Yeah. I just use little stuff for my allergies, like the sprays. I hate taking the pills that, you know, just rub the whole system.
Oh, that's not good.
How does it look to you? Really, my wife first, and she had issues with it.
Um, they look interior. Um, ambient. Too. So.
And then it keeps you asleep?
It keeps it asleep.
You've still gotta get to sleep on your own. If you fight it.
If you fight it, it turns into, we're kind of.
End of edition. Yeah.
Makes you feel. So.
No.
No, no, no. Yeah, but it's.
Time. Time.
Yes. But if you fight it, then you get past the.
Oh, yeah. Me, that is your problem. But I have to take your eye in. Ten hours.
Good evening, welcome everyone. Welcome to the, we will call to order the regular meeting of Marshville Borough Council, May 20th, 2019. If I could all ask you please tonight, during our moment of silence, I would ask you please to remember Michelle Fina. She was the director at the Marshville YMCA who passed away suddenly on vacation last week. She did a lot for the YMCA. I believe there's going to be a vigil for her on Wednesday night. Correct? Seven thirty, where's that gonna be, Ali? At the Y? Okay, if anyone would like to attend. And also, tonight we found out Virginia Cypher's, our Assistant Borough Secretary, her father just passed away. So, please remember these families and your thoughts and prayers during our moment of silence, please. So we will do our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance, and then we'll begin. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do the roll call, please.
Good evening. Mayor Ravella. Councilman Bowers.
Here.
Councilwoman Drysbrock.
Here.
Councilwoman Chronicle.
Here.
Vice President Larison.
Here.
Councilman Nay.
Here.
Councilman Parker.
Here.
President Smith.
Here.
Councilman Jaeger.
Here.
And our junior councilperson Garrett Foy is present one last time.
Okay, before we begin with the presentations, I'll let our solicitor just make mention about an executive session that we recently had.
Yeah, we had an executive session following the agenda meeting last week, just to discuss a personnel issue and potential litigation matter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, tonight we have two presentations. The first one is for our Garrett Foy. Foy, I'm sorry. There's a presentation that will be done for him from Chris Cap, Executive Director of Pennsylvania State Association of Borough. And this is for his junior councilperson position for the 2018-19 year.
Madam President, thank you very much for the invitation, members of council, mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. The Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs is very proud to present the distinguished Junior Councilperson Award to Garrett Foy. This plaque reads, "Before Morrisville Borough Council on May 20th, 2019, congratulations on being recognized by the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs and Morrisville Borough Council. As an exceptional youth leader, your participation in borough government decision-making is very much appreciated and has positively impacted your community. The Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs is proud to acknowledge your dedication and encourage your continued growth as a local leader." Signed by Carl Cox, our president from Tiggle County, and myself, Executive Director of PSAB. And I just want to commend the council for extending this opportunity to a junior councilperson. It's disappointing sometimes, so many local governments around the Commonwealth don't extend this opportunity to our young people. And civics is strained right now in our country. And I think the Morrisville Borough Council, mayor, you all get it. And I really want to commend you for that. And Garrett, your parents, your friends, they should be just so proud of what you've done. And I'm hoping that in the future, maybe you can be a further role model to your peers and colleagues. I'm just a few years older than you, so. I think I'm three or four, actually, so. But if you can reach those people and encourage them to get involved in their local government, or any community organization for that matter. That's the objective of why the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs stands behind our council members, who extend these types of opportunities to our young people. And we're hoping that in the future, when you go to college or wherever you're going in the future, you know, please think about taking a role, you know, in a local government in the future, or be very involved in your community, and be a peer educator wherever possible. So, I want to extend this to you. May I approach, Madam President?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much.
If you'd like to step right over here by the flag, we'll get some pictures.
Get some pictures of you also.
Garrett, if you want to vouch your family up, you can.
Mom, get in there. There you go. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chris, very much.
Before you leave tonight, Garrett, there's a quiz on everything you've learned. It's multiple choice, though.
Garrett, it's been an absolute pleasure to have you here with us. We were delighted, and we wish you the best in whatever endeavor that you do in the future. Thank you. Okay. Our next presentation is by Robin Robinson, Bucks County Recorder of Deeds, and she will be speaking on Adopt a Book Project. Yes, yes, please.
You can take it out of that, if you'd rather hold it.
It's easier.
No, I like, I wanna hide behind it. Because we had a little mix-up originally. I didn't know I was supposed to be here tonight, and then Corinne let me know, and I had a more casual event that I was at, that I had to come straight over. So I'm gonna hide behind the podium. I really like this.
No problem.
Usually I don't, but tonight I do. Anyway, thank you for having me. This is a beautiful building. I've never been in here before, and it's just gorgeous. This is Gail Humphrey, my first deputy. And we have been in the Recorder of Deeds office now for about seventeen months. And a year ago, last, a year ago in April, I was at a Recorder of Deeds meeting, and I met this wonderful recorder of deeds, Mary Ann from Blair County. And she was telling me about her old deed books, and about how she was restoring them with record improvement money. Well, you know in life how we don't know what we don't know? Well, that's every day at the Recorder of Deeds office. I don't know what I don't know. So I was very interested in this. I came home and I said to my staff, "Where are our old deed books? Do we have any?" And they took me to the warehouse, and there they were. So, this is really, really sad. So the first thing that happened to me, my heart kinda went in my stomach, and I thought, "Oh, my goodness. William Penn's name is in here. These books go back to 1684." And then I thought, "Oh, no. This is my responsibility, and I'm gonna have to do something about this." It's like I'm the mother, you know, who tries to walk by the dirty laundry on the floor, and finally I pick it up and do it. I kinda feel like this is that. I've gotta do this, and I've gotta fix it. So Mary Ann told me about CoFile, the company that she used. And like I said, record improvement money, and many of you may know what that is, but I didn't know. Record improvement money is, by state law, the Recorder of Deeds collects five dollars with every deed, or mortgage, or anything that we record in our office. Three of those dollars stays in the Recorder of Deeds office for record improvement. Two of those dollars go to the county. So, I said, "Okay, I've gotta figure this out." So, Mary Ann used CoFile, and Gail and I went up to CoFile in Vermont, and we visited. It was beautiful, beautiful lab, everyone wears white coats, and they mend and fix and preserve history. So, we decided to go ahead and do it. And here the books are, looking better in Vermont, looking a little better already. You can still see the ends of the paper all crumbly, and string, string is an enemy of paper. I'm learning so much about paper and books, it's fascinating. And I love it now, I dream about books. So, anyway, we started it with $250,000 of record improvement money. That, this is another story, but when, a week before I took office, the previous Recorder of Deeds gave $900,000 of our record improvement money to the county, kinda swept it. So I went back to them and asked them for it back, and they gave me $250,000, and we started the preservation with forty-five books. So you can see here, the books are starting to get better. They had to put everything back in order, because if Corinne came to the office and said, "Look, I need to see book fifteen. I'm not seeing what I need to see on the microfilm." We would have to go out to that warehouse, dig through all those books, and find her book fifteen. This is what we have to do, in maintaining the record and being able to present it to the constituents when they want it. So, pages would get mixed up, all these books have been cut, they call it guillotine, to be microfilmed, because back when they did this, they didn't have good scanners. So they had to cut the books and put them through a machine to scan them. Every book we have, even the newer ones, and we haven't done books since about the 1980s, but every book we have is cut. So, CoFile went through, they put all the pages back together, you can see how things are starting to look better. Quick history of paper, I'm learning so much in this job. So back in the day, in 1684, and I can't read the numbers, and I haven't memorized them. Paper was made from cotton. My mother used to tell me about the ragmen selling rags. Well, they would sell the rags, and it would be turned into paper. Clean rags cost more than dirty rags. And Joe, our salesperson, loves to tell us that some of our books are done in blue paper and gray paper, and he likes to tell us that these were, this was made from uniforms of the Civil War. You know, I don't know if that's true, probably dirty rags, but it is really interesting, and the books are absolutely beautiful. In the middle there, and like I said, I haven't memorized these dates, I can't see it. Paper was made of wood pulp, and so if I brought some with me, and I didn't, because I didn't want to mess up your floor, and I crumbled it, it would just spread everywhere. Nowadays, paper's excellent, because if we took a piece of paper and we crumbled it, it would stay in a ball. So our paper nowadays is excellent. So how are we gonna preserve this paper? Well, and first I want to show you, this is some of the books cut up. This is what they all look like. All the bindings are cut. And Gail and I have saved a lot of the bindings, and this is the linen bindings, because I feel it's so interesting. I have a dream, part of this dream is reality, we are moving our offices, going to the sixth floor, we're having a whole new office. My dream is I'm gonna have a big, beautiful case, not that big, Gail, a big case, that I want to put the tape and the linen pieces in, and the old covers, so people can come and say, "Oh, this is what it looked like." And then when they see the new books, you know, it'll be, how science has saved history, because that's what we're doing here. We're trying to save the history of the county and the country. Mending, so these are our actual Bucks County pages you're seeing, and these are little, they look like little dental tools. This person is scraping tape off the page. So, again, with string, tape is one of the biggest enemies of paper. And I know that the person who taped these pages back together thought they were doing something really good, and they were trying to preserve the record. But in fact, they were making it more difficult, because the ink will suck up into the tape. So we have to go through all of this to get this tape off. So this was fascinating, and Gail, I don't know if you thought this was as fascinating as I did, but this is an actual Bucks County page getting a bath in water. So they put the pages right in water. And I think, "Oh, my God, do these people really know what they're doing? Are they gonna ruin these pages?" But sure enough, after the bath, they get hung up to dry. And again, these are Bucks County actual pages, hanging on fishing wire, drying, and then the flat ones, because they're so fragile, they have to dry flat. And you can see the little fragmented pieces, those have all been put back together with their pages, which is just absolutely fascinating to me. So this cockling is, again, when the pages are dry, just like if we put something in the dryer, and it would come out wrinkly. This is to keep the pages flat, so it doesn't have a wrinkle in it. More mending, this was a cover that a Recorder of Deeds did once upon a time, again, to preserve the record. But we have to peel this page, it's a piece of linen, I believe, off of the original page to preserve it. It's just so many technical little things, and this is the paste from those pages that were glued on here, and they had to scrape them off. I mean, I can't even believe these books have survived all this, you know, let alone getting mended like this, and you're gonna see them in front of you here. So this is a solvent bath, and you can see, again, these are our pages with the actual rips where the tape had been. And they're going to be mended by, they use a Japanese linen and like a little iron here, oh, this is, this is still more removing of Scotch tape. One of the things that makes these books so expensive to preserve is the Scotch tape and the mildew. And I was at Comcast Newsmakers, I did a spot for them with the old books, and I, the hostess is lovely, and I have an old book there, and I opened it up, and bugs flew in my face. And Comcast Newsmakers, they don't edit or cut, and I just, you know, pretended that there were no bugs there. My staff, two members of our staff, went down to get the books put in order to go to Vermont, and they were each, they were there a week. They were each out sick the following week, from the fumes and the mildew. I mean, these books were almost a danger to us. Here's some tape, and you can see, I don't know if you can see it, but the ink has been sucked off the page onto the tape. And I have saved some of this tape, because I think it's fascinating. Here's the deacidification process, they use a chemical, now this is Vermont, so we know it's environmentally friendly, they assured Gail and I that this is environmentally friendly. Little gallon of this chemical costs $400. So it's very dear, and it's really, really does something good to the pages to save them. This was the Japanese linen I was telling you about, that repairs the rips in the pages, and that's a little heating iron. It has to be just the right temperature, so that it doesn't hurt the pages. And then after the pages are, all of that is done, the tape is gone, the mold is gone, they've had their bath, they've dried, they've had their deacidification, they get put in a Myler sleeve, as you see in front of you. These are polyester archival sleeves, they can be touched, they're UV protected, and so they can be enjoyed by everybody. You can thumb through these books, and no bugs are gonna jump out at you, no fumes, I mean, they are in absolutely pristine condition. Here's an original cover, and again, in my dream, I'm gonna put this in the case, because this is all handmade, and it's part of our past. And then the final product, so we have, out of the 700 books, we have about half of them done. And I know your next question is gonna be, "How long are they gonna last, and where are you gonna put them?" So, CoFile has guaranteed me, these books are gonna last 500 years, and we're gonna hold them to it. Storage, where am I gonna put these beautiful books? They can't go back on the floor in the warehouse, and they're very, very heavy. Each book weighs about at least 22 pounds, when you pick them up, you'll see. So, again, we've been really lucky, because we're redoing the administration building, I've been given a storage unit in the old sheriff's department on the ground floor. These have to be on the ground floor, because they're too heavy, they'll fall through the ceiling. Who knew? I'm learning all this. But they have to be on the ground floor, so they'll be in a temperature-controlled, locked, storage area in the building. So, if you want to come down and see book thirty, we'll be able to go downstairs and pull it for you immediately. So we're very, very excited about this. We have people in every day, working on their genealogy, working, wanting to search their properties. It's really, really turned into something exciting. So now, how am I gonna pay for this? Well, I told you about record improvement money. Record improvement money is never gonna be as much as it was, because houses aren't selling like they were, refinancing isn't happening. We're down, we were down last year, we're down this year, so we're not collecting, because we're not, you know, producing. So, the second way we're paying for this is, we've applied for several grants, we got one teeny tiny one, we're waiting to hear on the others. And I said to Joe from CoFile, "I need to do something." He said, "Well, in New England, they do adopt a book programs." I said, "Well, I could do that." So I started an adopt a book program, and I'm looking for donations, and people give me $10, they give me $100. Falls Township gave us $5,000. I, our program, Gail and I have raised more money in adopt a book than any program that CoFile has been involved with or knows about. So I'm very excited about it, we've raised over $21,000. So when someone, like Morrisville, gives us a nice contribution, you will get your name in the book. And, you know, we can come back and all dress up, and we can take pictures, and I don't know if any of you saw the Falls pictures that were in all the papers, and we can do that, because people are really excited about these books. We can leave it here on display, like we did in Falls, people like to come in and see it. And remember, they're gonna last 500 years, so, you know. So I just want to show you this real quick. Book one and two, real quick, I love book one and two. Gail and I went to the David Library in Washington's Crossing, we're gonna do an event there, and we brought book one, because we wanted them to see, we're so proud of book one, we couldn't wait to get there. And the lady looked at it, she was, she knew what she was doing, and she said to me, "Robin, this is not an original deed book." And so I was very upset, thinking I had just spent all this money, and these aren't original? So I called Joe right away, Gail was yelling at me, called Joe right away, and he said, "Book one and two, that's all you have." And Gail and I discovered in the back of book one and two, the Recorder of Deeds from 1890 to 1902 wrote that this is a copy of the original deed book one, and that it was worn and dilapidated, and it just was awful. So I think, "Well, this is pretty cool, because here's a Recorder of Deeds preserving the record, no Xerox machine, no typewriter, this is what they had to do, they had to hand copy it." So, a few weeks went by, and I started being, you know, thinking this was great. We went to a genealogy event at Delaware Valley University, and a gentleman came to our table, and he said, "I have one of those books at home." "Oh, my God," he sent us a text picture, "It's book one. I know it's book one, I gotta have it, I'm gonna lure him in, I'm gonna grab the book." So my solicitor said, "You can't do that, you have to, you know, you have to do certain way." Well, I lured him in, he had a child, I said, "We babysit the child." He brought the book in, we were all excited. It turned out it was smaller, and it turned out it was a ledger for a general store from Warrington. And we had to babysit the child, and Gail had to teach him and show him every historical thing in the office. So I'm like, "Get rid of the book, okay." So anyway, a few weeks after that, time just flies when you're having fun, we had a class from Bucks County Community College in to learn how to search. They were doing projects, and we stayed open late, and they searched, and the professor was lovely, and she said to me, "Robin, the Recorder Deeds, Ed Goodconnect," I don't know if many of you know him, I ran against him twice, and lost twice. But anyway, she said, "He used to walk around here with a small, little book that he said was deed book one, the original." So I went in under my desk, that little footstool I was using, and I picked it up, and I took it out to her, and I said, "This?" She said, "Yeah, that's original deed book one." So, Gail and I got excited, because it's all vinyl, you know, it's all, has vinyl covering on it, they tried to protect it. We called CoFile, they took it to Vermont, sure enough, it is deed book one, and the original. So we are getting that fixed, so we're very, very, very excited about that. This is just this fellow, Pemberton, you may know him, if you study history, he was William Penn's right-hand person, he was the Recorder of Deeds, the Clerk of Courts, everything, because they didn't have all of that. I started reading about him, he came over on a ship, he had a million kids, really only seven, but seven seems like a lot to me. So he's a really interesting fellow, and his name is throughout the books. So last August, Gail and I were at another Recorder of Deeds conference, and I met Debbie from Washington County, and she was telling me about slave information in her books. So we came home, "Do we have slave information in these books?" And sure enough, we do. Every township and municipality in Bucks County had slaves, and I have the whole list of all the slaves from Bucks County. And what they would do, the Quakers would purchase slaves before the Civil War, and then set them free. And they would record them in our miscellaneous books. So we have these gorgeous miscellaneous books, did we bring one tonight? We brought one tonight, that has all kinds, it's interesting, like one slave owner said, you know, "I'm gonna purchase this person at 18 years old, and at 28, I want to set him free." I mean, this is all listed here, and it's just unbelievable. We have one of these on display at the Pearl Buck House with the African American Museum, they have an exhibit there, from Africa to Bucks County, and everybody is fascinated by these miscellaneous books. So we're still in the process of repairing them. This is Lucille Trench, and she was the first woman Recorder of Deeds. I'm the second. And I met her daughter at the Grange Fair last summer, and she raised a lot of money and gave it to Adopt a Book, and we dedicated book fifteen to Lucille Trench, who went on to be a county commissioner. And then this is Lynn in the pinkish-red blouse, and she is our historical expert, and she, in this picture, is teaching a genealogy class on how to search. And I'm having a book tour, and I'm almost done with my first leg of it. We will be at the David Library on June 4th for a week, and then June 27th, I'm gonna be at the Mercer Museum, talking about the books and saving the books, we're gonna have 25 books with us. And Dr. Connie Ace, who is the specialist in Bucks County on genealogy, is gonna talk about how to use the deed books to search your genealogy. So I think that's gonna be really, really interesting, and that's open to the public. The other thing I wanted to tell you about quick is, I've started this fraud alert program. And originally, we had seen a commercial on television that for $9.95, a person could get their, have their, a month, a person could have their deed protected, and I didn't understand that. So Gail and I called Landex, who's our vendor, and they created this program for us. It's really a identity theft program, and I haven't even told this to Gail, this happened to me this weekend. I was talking to one of my neighbors, telling him about this fraud alert program, that you just sign up, it's free, it's free to Bucks County. You sign up, you put in five names, and if anybody records anything in our office, you get an alert. And he said to me, "Robin," he said, "I sold a house in Warrington, and I announced it to my family that I had no mortgage, it was gonna be free and clear rental." He said, "And then a few months later, I got papers in the mail, his niece had taken out a mortgage on this property." And if he had been signed up, we didn't have fraud alert then, but if he had been signed up for it, he would have gotten an alert. Instead, it took him two years and $100,000 to fix it. So I think that's important, it's free to everybody, please sign up, I'm just trying to protect you. The other thing, real quick, when you purchase a home, you get your deed from your title company, it'll come like in two weeks. Well, there's companies out there, remember, all this is public information. There are companies out there, or people out there, that look through our system every day. Any of you can go and look at your, look up your deed online, or look at your neighbors, we'll charge you a small fee, but, so these people are looking through to see who's buying homes, and they're selling them a card, that for $89.95, they'll send you a copy, or they'll send you your original deed. Well, you're gonna get your original deed from the title company, if you need a deed, call us, we'll help you. So, Gail and I, what are we gonna do to try to prevent this? So what we've done is, now, if you print anything from home or off-site, it's watermarked, it says "copy" on it. So that, how can you sell an original deed if it says "copy" on it? So I'm hoping to try to stop this, I don't know if I'll be able to. And this is the most important slide, this is my social media slide. I have very few followers on Facebook, you guys, and I really, really, I want to beef that up, because we put important things on there about fraud alert, different things. about Fraud Alert, different things are happening in the county, recycling programs. So, you know, feel free to follow me on Facebook, Recorder of Deeds Office. And this is our staff, and we're here to help you. If you ever need anything, please give us a call. Customer service is what I'm all about, and we're here to serve you. Thank you so much. And feel free to make a contribution to Adopt a Book. We'd love to put Morrisville's, your names in there, and it's really, really something that will last forever, at least 500 years. So for us, that will be forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That was absolutely so interesting. Oh my gosh. The books are beautiful. If, I don't know how long you're saying, but if anyone gets a chance to look at these books, it's amazing what they look like. And the one book to the left has some of Morrisville's history in it. So we go. Sure. Well, you might have to. It's pretty heavy. Need help.
It's become a real issue, how heavy they are.
These are beautiful books.
And the writing changes because it's different people, you know, recording. And back in the day, on the 10th century, the people could read or write. So this was, you know, this was a skill, and they got paid by the words. So when you read it, sometimes it's very word.
Yeah. Thank you so much for bringing this presentation. This is wonderful. Our third presentation we did at the agenda meeting, so it doesn't get redone tonight for the MS4 report. Our engineer came in and spoke about that. So at this time, we will open up public comment. I'll remind the public to please keep it to a three-minute limit. Please no political tonight, and we all know it's in that season, but keep it respectful to everyone. The first one is John Effrigiessi. If you, I'm sorry. State your name and your address for the record, please.
My name's John Effrigiessi. I've lived in a borough since 1976. I live at 100 Grove Street. Most of you don't know me. I haven't been here in quite some time because you've all been doing such a great job. However, I've noticed some things lately that can and should be addressed. I was a 30-year teamster. I drove tractor and trailers up and down the East Coast, all over, whether freight, chemicals, or hauling new cars. And one of the things that bothers me about Morrisville is that we have almost no industry in this town. We have Toll Brothers and Staley's. Yet, if you go down Philadelphia Avenue, from the trucks that go up and down that street, and Pennsylvania Avenue, that are coming into our borough and are only using these streets to bypass the Falls Township check system that they have at Tyburn Road and Route 13. Why do we need, why do we have trucks coming through our borough that are not doing anything except tearing up our streets? Like I said, we only have two industries. We have Staley's and Toll Brothers. And I'm probably wrong with somebody else, but the rest of them, we've got trash trucks, we've got stone trucks, we've got people out of a steel mill. They have access roads that are better than coming through Morrisville. And I think the town council should do something to ban trucks. Now, one particular instance that I had, I had to deliver a load of chemicals from a refinery down in Delaware, and I didn't know where I was going. So I asked my dispatcher, "Can you get me directions?" And he did. He says, "All you do is go up Route 13 into Glen Olden, Pennsylvania, make a right-hand turn at the police station, and the company that you want is right on that street." Well, sure enough, I did. I got a tractor trailer, 80,000 pounds. I'll make the right-hand turn at the police station. Sure, there's a sign, no trucks except for local deliveries. Well, as soon as I made the right-hand turn, a police officer pulled up behind me with his lights on. So I stopped and got out, and he says, "Where are you going?" And I told him the address. He says, "I'm going on this particular street." He says, "Well, that's in Fallcroft. You're in Glen Olden. You can't come through my town on this street." And it was a $300 fine. This is what happens throughout, you know, some parts of Pennsylvania. It's something that maybe we ought to look through because we don't need the aggravation. Another thing is I live next to the Dairy Queen. I'm one block away from the Bridge Commission, and I'm waking up at night by trucks using jake brakes without mufflers. We have a jake brake ordinance in this town, but apparently it's totally ignored on Route 1 corridor when these people, we still get all the sound, and they can wake you up out of a sound sleep. That's another thing. My third point is, there's almost a completely disregard of the traffic light at Bridge and Delmore. But it doesn't matter which way you're going. If you're trying to cross that street, people do not stop to make right-hand turns on Delmore coming off the bridge. They just don't stop. They don't even slow down. You can, I bet you you could solve almost half the national debt by putting a police officer at that corner and just ticketing cars that go through the light. Number four on my list is the drug dealing at the Dairy Queen. I can sit out and look out of my kitchen window, and I'll see a New Jersey car pull in back into the back fence of the Dairy Queen, and he doesn't get out of the car. Next thing you know, a car will pull in right up alongside of him, hands go out the windows, and they're gone. It's also people in the neighborhood walking there and picking up drugs from the people in the Dairy Queen. That's the central location, it seems. Oh, and one other thing that really bothers me is that I know we don't have trucks coming on Bridge Street, but the fact of the matter is, if you get a tractor and trailer come up to the light at Pennsylvania Avenue, you've got two signs, no left turn, no right turn. So where's the truck going to go? He's now being funneled to a five-ton bridge, and he's got to make either the turn on Delmore to the left and climb the hill up there at Trenton Avenue, or go to Delmore Avenue all the way down to Philadelphia, and then come back instead of going to Route 1. I can't understand the logic behind that, to stop the trucks from having an access to Route 1. So they've got to go down to Philadelphia and Pennsylvania, and it's almost an impossible turn to go underneath the bridge without tying up traffic. And the number, the last thing on my list, and I'm sorry for going across the time, I've noticed that every one of you is drinking water out of a container. I went to a restaurant in Satterton the other day, had a glass of water from their water system, and it was fantastic. Our water system in this town sucks, and that's all I've got to say. I've got less chlorine in my pool than smells coming out of the tap. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Holly Harmon. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Holly Harmon, Hillside Avenue. Just one quick question. I just would like to know what the policy is about political signs on public property, such as Williamson Park. It's just a simple question. Thank you.
Not allowed on public park, right?
Wait till the end.
Yeah, we'll wait till the end. Okay. Next would be Kurt Holt-Hendricks. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Kurt Holt-Hendricks. You're in at Melvin Court North. Don't run off yet. I loved your presentation. That's wonderful to see what work you guys are doing up there to keep our history secured. A friend of mine did our building we have in town, went back, all the way back to 1600 to see where that land transferred through. And if we don't save these records, we're going to lose all of our history. So thank you very much for what you're doing. Second, I saw on the agenda, applying for a roof grant for the library. That's wonderful. Keep it going. Take the money if it's offered. Spend the engineering money. Doesn't make a difference. We need to fix what we have in town. Because without it, there's no reason to be here if we don't have infrastructure, places to be used by the public, the residents, the kids. Loving what's going on. Have Memorial Day weekend coming up. Tomorrow's Election Day for primaries, so get out and vote tomorrow. Keep the positivity going in this town. Keep the good work moving forward, and then enjoy your Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jane Berger. State your name and address for the record, please.
Jane Berger, 90, West Maple Avenue, Morrisville, Pennsylvania. Certainly enjoyed the presentation with our Recorder of Deeds. Just talked before the meeting, my house has its 100th birthday this year, so I'm going to go up and get the history on the house. It's been on my to-do list, so this has motivated me to come through with that. It is important to preserve our history, that we don't lose it. Resident hat. The MBA, Morrisville Business Association, wants to thank the Borough of Morrisville for their support in permitting us to close Bridge Street for the car show that was held on May 11th. The weather cooperated. It was a great event. We're looking forward to doing it again yesterday. We also want to publicly thank the fire company. You know, fire trucks are always pleasant to have around when it's for show and education and not having to fight a fire. So we appreciate it, the Morrisville Fire Company, for putting that there to help with the traffic control. And certainly also want to thank our police department that provided a part-time, I'm sorry, a full-time officer that helped with that. And we did send a check for that, so we're supporting the police department with that. I think I've thanked everyone that we need to, certainly everyone that came and everyone that put the cars in there. It was nice to see several council people and our mayor come down there. And I know some others weren't able to attend, and were probably working. But it was a great event, and the business community was very thrilled with it. And it was nice that we could do that for the community and begin to support our business community. So again, I publicly want to thank everyone who helped and participated.
Thank you. Do you want to address that?
The council president asked me to address a question about the borough policy with regard to political signs on borough property. And simply put, political signs are not allowed on municipal government property unless that location is used as a polling place, and it would be permitted on Election Day, Election Day only.
Okay. The only thing I could mention about the truck traffic, it's frustrating. We went through, has to be, I'm sorry, they ended that study about a year ago. That study with PennDOT had to go on for about a year, year and a half, meeting after meeting. We had Senator down here, we had our state reps down here. PennDOT controls a lot of that. And even after they did the study that we had, they designate where you're allowed to put those signs, where they can't turn those trucks. We were trying everything possible because of the way they were turning down there by the plaza. And it's frustrating because they allowed it to be stopped on certain streets making those turns, but yet they allowed it in others. The other one was, the frustrating one was on Philadelphia Ave, because I never could understand why that particular one, they just made it an advisory, advisory turn, not something that could be ticketed for making that turn with a truck. So of course, companies are going to ignore that. But PennDOT is where we have the problem with that because they dictate all that on those roads. And even though we had meeting after meeting, went back and forth, that's what they set up for where those turns were going to be. That's the frustrating part. And the jake brake, you're absolutely right. We do have an ordinance against that. It's been there for quite a while. I know we had a big issue down on Bridge Street with that. I don't know if we have a control, if you're saying it's on US 1, because you're right there?
It's the ones that come through, you know, come through the toll booth.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, you know, as 30 years as a truck driver, jake brakes were installed in trucks to keep the engine, to slow a truck going down a hill. You could not have hills.
Right. Yeah, I don't know if we have a control on the bridge part, right? Yeah, I mean, you might want to send a message up to the Bridge Commission, maybe? I don't know.
I see Morrisville's Truck Enforcement Department here several times.
Yes.
It's a lot up here, you know, if you're not in jurisdiction.
Right. Right, the jake brake problem, that they're using it on the roadway up there, that's what I'm saying. I don't know that we can enforce that on that road. That's the road. That's the thing. On our road, in our jurisdiction here, we can, you know? We could look into it. I'm not sure myself how that would work up there on that roadway. But yeah, there's a problem with that, they're using it up there, and maybe there is something we can do about it. Thank you, though, for bringing it to our attention.
We do have signs on Philadelphia Avenue, no jake braking.
Yeah, yeah. And I know there was an issue on Bridge Street, so that actually, the ordinance should bring it down a little bit of the stop down there.
We would have to do something.
Yeah, yeah.
John, I'm sure you remember, you and I got that jake brake ordinance passed. So we do have an ordinance that says no jake brakes, so we had to go to PennDOT because we don't own all those streets. But they did give us permission to do that. Those signs and that ordinance is properly done, so.
It's not the trucks going through the borough, okay? It's the ones that are primarily using the Route 1 corridor, you know, toll booth. As we can see, if there's one particular idiot, I swear to God.
Yeah. And I know you live right there, so you hear every one. Unfortunately, I think the state police are the ones that are supposed to enforce the bridge, so that could be probably part of the issue.
Yeah, so I don't know, Mayor Ravel, is it something that, we make a contact with the Bridge Commission? See if there's something they can do as far as what they enforce it? And see if there's something maybe we can do to put on the radar that's happening up there and what the issue is? We can try and see what we can do with it. But like I said, that's tough because it is on the roadway, and I get it. You're like right there, earshot of all that.
It seems like it's gotten worse because they only baffle one-siders.
Right, yeah.
Now, everything that's on that side is now being echoed.
Yeah, I was going to say, almost like an echo chamber down there, the way they did that. Yeah. Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. I'm going to close public comment at this time. Next, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes. We have 6A and 6B, council meeting minutes for Tuesday, April 9th, and Monday, April 15th. If it's the pleasure of the council to vote these minutes together, we can do that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. That was, Mike, you moved that, right?
Yes.
Next is Finance. 7A is the Treasury Report, me their finance statement. Did anyone have any questions in the finance statement? Okay, then we're going to ask, go to 7B, which is Call for Motion to Prove the Bill List and Pay the Bills. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Justin moved it, and Arlene seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? No? Okay, can we have a roll call on it?
My call.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Ms. Dreisbach.
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle.
Yes.
Ms. Larsson.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Nang.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Yeager.
I'd like to thank Cutting Hams Hardware, Councilman Parker, and Councilman Nae for their help with the annual canal cleanup. Of course, thank everyone who came out. Not only to that, but there's been quite a few recent spring cleanups in the borough. In fact, just over the weekend, the EAC had a tour, a walking tour of the Riverfront Preserve. Janet and I were able to attend, and we'd like to thank the naturalist, Mary Ann, who came, and the EAC for putting that together. If you weren't able to attend, there's going to be another one in the fall, and I do believe they advertise it. It's a very nice tour of the preserves, if anyone's interested. Regarding our police department, the council is aware, along with the 30-hour threshold, and we also currently have an officer who is unable to fill shifts. These are a couple of factors that must be taken into consideration if we want to continue to maintain two officers on the street at all times. So I'd like to make a couple of recommendations or requests. I'd like to see the 30-hour limit revisited. I've said it previously, we have a hard time staffing two patrols, or the patrols with two officers. In part, it's the 30-hour cap, and of course, I want to thank Chief McClay. I mentioned that he helped out on Super Bowl Sunday. Well, he's also helped on Easter Sunday. The council will be seeing an increase in the department's overtime budget very soon because we are forced to use full-time officers that work to cover these shifts at overtime rate. In the past, we've asked to allow the part-time officers to work more, so that's something that's up to council. Also, I'd like the council to revisit the sheer amount of part-time officers we have. There is a huge cost savings when an officer covers these shifts, the part-time or per diem, whichever you choose. Now, it is true that there is a $400 clothing allowance per part-time officer, but the borough saves $500 per 12-hour shift by using a per diem officer over a full-time officer on overtime. I don't know if we ever actually gave that number out, so I wanted to mention it. So I would like, like I said, I would like to see a motion to increase from eight to up. Also, I think the council is aware that we did just have one, very recently resigned, one of our part-time officers, so we're down one. He did take a job for full-time employment, so. And lastly, I see that there's a motion 9J for the DCED staff study. I did submit paperwork for that a few months ago, actually, I think it was in October. If the borough needs it again, if that motion passes, I'd be happy to give it in. And regarding 9D, the Marshall Labor Day picnic, there's a vote for the 2019 picnic. Over the years, this picnic has been organized by different folks, beginning with the arts, from everyone, from the arts and events community to mayors, to even one time, there was a borough employee at one point. Although it has not taken place every year, it remains one of the longest-running events in our borough. The picnic is not a personal event, it's not the Dave Revella event or the mayor's event. It's a borough event put together by the community, but it has a funding component. In the past, the picnic had its own $2,000 budget line. And organizing over the years, my wife and I, we were actually able to cut that down in half. If need be, we're willing, my wife and I would be willing to step up for the 2019 picnic and organize it. However, there would need to be an added cost to the event of the $1,000. So if that's the intent, I'd like to see that in the motion. Of course, it's not all, bad news, because if, that's not the way the council wants to go. There is the rec board in place, they've been around for over a year now, they have funding revenue source. And lastly, I'd like to conclude by congratulating a couple of people that I just did the wedding. Some, it was actually right here, and some people saw it. So I'd like to congratulate Julie Anne, who I called Jay, so that was actually one of the trickier parts in the wedding, to call her by her real name, and of course, her new husband, Andrew, so congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Anthony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, are you, when you referenced the 30-hour cap, are you asking for that to be completely lifted, or are you asking for an exclusion to the, just for the police officers only?
Well, I know the council put together a handbook that states a 30-hour cap. So to me, an easy way to help continue to have two officers on the street would be to make an exception to say that your per diem, essential personnel, would not fall under that. So that way, you could still keep your 30 hours for the other departments and tie the hands of the police department when it comes to filling shifts. Because you've got to remember, as we've stated many times, and I have no intention of trying to repeat a year's worth of dialect up here, but with the per diem officers, they don't have schedules like a typical part-time employee. It's when we need someone, that's when phone calls get made, to see who's available to fill in. So it varies from week to week and from officer to officer.
Madam President, may I?
Sure.
Thank you. So I just want to make a couple of comments and possibly a question, we'll see when we get there. So the 30-hour limit. We received a report from the chief. After the 30-hour limit was set, and everybody knew about it, it was pending, it was about to be implemented, it was pending, everybody knew about it, and we received a report stating that what we were doing wasn't going to change two officers 24/7. And I sat here in this seat and specifically asked the chief to make sure that what we were doing wasn't going to change the two officers 24/7, which is what he was requesting. I was told, no, it would not change. So were we wrong then, or are we wrong now? I'm not looking for an answer to that question yet.
Right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
There, I keep hearing the word "per diem," but I have never, ever heard council vote on a per diem position. I think we're just trying to change terminology to fit our own need. And although people are focused on the fact that there is a limit for part-timers, there's a reason there's a limit for part-timers. There is a need to provide benefits to people that are working full-time hours, and for me, it's an ethical conundrum to allow people to work full-time and not provide them the same benefits as the next full-timer sitting next to them, just because we're not calling them a full-timer. That's an ethical issue for me. Might not be for everyone, but it is for me. And I guess I do have one question, and maybe I misunderstood the letter that we received. Didn't the person resign as part-time officer, not because they got a full-time position, didn't they have a business they were running and just didn't have time to put the hours in? That's how the letter read, at least. They were a business owner that didn't have time to put in the time. But maybe I misread it. Thank you.
If I could ask the mayor, when you said, well, maybe I'm seeing this wrong, when you're saying about the part-timers, you're asking us to increase, because you now have one position open, because there's eight, so you're at seven now, so you're asking to add more part-timers on? Is there an amount that you're looking at for part-time?
Well, I'd like, personally, I'd like to see a couple of more, and that's not, even if you agreed tonight to do that, that's not an easy fix, because you've heard many times, to find part-time officers is a very difficult thing. But if we had more part-time officers, we would be able to fill these shifts. And as far as that comment that the chief said we would have no coverage, I don't recall that ever being said. I believe that was in regard to losing the one full-time officer and the truck enforcement. We've actually put together memo after memo to this council saying we have an issue with the 30-hour cap. You can go back, it's all public record. This isn't just comments on the dais, I've sent in memos, I have them in my folder in front of me. Like I said, I don't really need to, my intent was not to start hashing this back and forth. It's just a simple request. I'd like to see motions for it, and hopefully they would pass.
Okay, so, so right now, you want the council to decide, I don't know if that's even going to be tonight, maybe they'll look at that in June, I don't know, you're just bringing this up tonight, but you want to add extra, I'm sorry, I have allergies, two more, at least two more, part-time? You're giving me, like, how many? I'm sure they won't have a problem if that's what you need, is extra part-time to cover what you're saying you need.
I love you saying that, but there was a point where you and Councilman Larsson held up the budget and said, we're getting eight, that's all we're getting. I'm asking for 12. I don't know if you would go that high. And again, it's not going to be easy to find that many.
Okay, so you're, so, well, then the council will have to decide that. They're hearing this the first time tonight, so the council can decide that, think it over? Come back with it, decide what you want to do.
We've been asking for this, this isn't the first time you've heard it. It's the first time this, at this meeting, I've requested it, the chief's requested it. I don't know how anyone could sit here and say that you didn't know that. We don't like that.
Can we make a motion on that tonight?
Can you hold on? The attorney wants to speak.
I think it might be a good idea to actually have a discussion with the labor council regarding this, because there's potential ramifications under the CBA.
Okay.
Can I go back to one thing Mr. Jaeger said on the 30-hour cap? When was that approved? That was part of the policy manual, correct?
It was, as the policy, yes.
And what month was that?
It was, you got it, it was the fall time. Fall time that was approved.
In 2018?
Correct.
Right, that was prior to us terminating one full-time officer?
Yes.
Okay.
A policy was put in.
Yes, it was active at that time. It was active at the time we received the written report on the changes and how they would affect us.
Okay. At this point, our labor attorney is saying we need to have a discussion about this, we're making a change on this, because I don't want to put the borough on liability either.
I have a question of the solicitor. The question about the CBA? Solicitor? The question about the CBA, is that for additional part-time offices, or?
Well, if you're talking.
It really depends on what is actually being proposed. I mean, if you're talking about a situation where you're bringing people up into what would be considered a full-time position, yeah, I think that has ramifications, you know?
My question was trying to, your question is whether or not it affects the CBA, is that the hours, or is that the additional part-timers?
Well, I think the additional part-timers is more budgetary issue, but, I mean, I could be mistaken. I think that the hours is, that's a labor issue potentially.
So the budget, as we all know, there's a certain amount in the budget, I think is what you're getting at, Ted, that pays for, no matter how many part-time you have, there's a budgeted amount, and then it spends within that budget, is that what you're asking?
Well, I mean, the solicitor brought up the CBA, so I was just curious as to what he thought would be an issue with the CBA, and I understand now he's referring to the hours, not necessarily any, yeah, not necessarily the increase in the part-time officers.
Correct.
But I mean, as we know, there is an issue, so an officer is not filling shifts. I'd like to make a motion to increase, you know, the part-time offices. We're only talking about an equipment, an equipment, you know, charge, which I'm sure is in the budget for the police department. I mean, I can't see why we couldn't.
Yeah.
Rather than later, at least let the chief, you know, have a limit and start looking.
Okay, so he, so right now, he has at least one, so how many does the council want to give him? 10, 12? The mayor's asking for 12 for part-time, because we are down an officer that can't make those shifts right now. So.
I personally would like to get official word from labor council before we make any decisions, to ensure that we're not opening ourselves up for any litigation.
Okay. Yeah, considering, yeah, well, can't get into it, but.
To our solicitor, is it possible to make an exception to the 30-hour cap in our policy manual just regarding our police officers?
Not without renegotiating the CBA?
Okay.
Okay, are we done with this? So at this point, we're recommending any other changes in that to go, and we'll have a talk with our labor attorney about that because of the situation.
Well, I think that the council should be advised as to any potential issues, and, I mean, just from a practical standpoint, and that's a management aspect that I want to touch, is, you know, the budgetary concerns. That's not a legal issue for me to comment on.
Okay.
But to the extent that there might be individuals who might not otherwise be entitled to fall under the cover of the CBA, who suddenly do, essentially, then that's potentially an issue.
I don't know the next time we're going to be getting together with the labor attorney, but it might be a good idea to ask him how we're going to cover this situation, like Mr. Parker was saying, because obviously, he's going to need that. So the one that we have opening, it might not be able to cover this, and just make sure that we're able to do that. Is that what you're saying? Or we can't give him at least a couple more?
I'm still confused. Is the question with the conflict, that possible conflict with the CBA, the number of part-time offices, or is?
No, that has nothing to do with the number of offers, per se. We're talking strictly about hours.
Hours, the 30-hour cap.
Correct.
So we could technically authorize the chief to start looking for additional part-timers, and that wouldn't affect the CBA?
Yeah, I mean, that's really an issue as to, you know, whether you can afford to bring in additional officers.
So that wouldn't be perceived as replacing a full-time officer with two part-time officers, correct?
Well, that's.
That's my concern, that's why I'd like to get labor attorneys.
Yeah, and that's a whole separate issue.
Yes, and that's the one I'm concerned with.
Yeah, that's a big issue, by the way, I guess.
How we're allowed to, how we're allowed to fill it, correct?
Correct.
I suggest we get that labor attorney then to weigh in on it. I don't think the council would have a problem, I think it's going to be needed to add some more on there to cover.
It's a question of the proper way to go about it, and.
I fully agree with that. My concern is we don't have an agenda meeting in June, so this needs to be done, you know, so that we can vote on it at the business meeting. I mean, not necessarily wait another month. I mean, the summer months are coming, and if we're having staffing issues now, it's only going to get worse.
We have occasion to speak to labor council on a separate issue that's pending, so.
Okay.
I believe that we could probably circulate whatever needs to be circulated among council, maybe take it up in an executive session, even in the absence of an agenda meeting.
Okay.
And I would imagine if labor attorney weighs in and says that we can do that without any, I mean, we'll call special meeting for it if we have to, to add what we need, would that be okay?
I have a question for the solicitor. Could we make the best of both worlds and create four temporary police part-time jobs for a seasonal summer, so that we could move ahead with staffing them, and then in the interim, we can talk with the labor attorney?
It seems on its face like a great idea, but it's really totally, I do want to make sure that you're not exposing yourselves.
About it one way.
Just run it past those guys.
It is, but you can also annex seasonal to fill a part-time, a full-time officer that's no longer employed with us, so I kind of, I kind of agree with the solicitor on that one. If we're going to worry about it one way, we need to worry about it both ways.
Yeah, all right.
Just do your due diligence on that, that's all.
It's a good idea.
All right, then we will.
You know, do we want to agree on how many we're going to go to the labor attorney with?
I would wait for the labor attorney to answer.
Say, hey, we'd like to bring on this many more part-timers, so this way.
The attorney knows what the mayor's asking for, he can speak with labor council, and they can get back to us and let us know, and if we need to pull an executive session to find out what we can and can't do.
Okay.
Then that's, I think, how we ought to proceed, so we don't end up with more of a mess.
Summer, summer.
All right. See where we are. Okay, I'm sorry. Our junior councilperson, his last report for us, Gary Foy.
Good evening, council members. As we approach the end of my school year, I couldn't be more thankful to have been blessed with the opportunity to be a part of the council and see what it is like to be a council member.
You're saying, no way.
This is my last week of the school year, and my graduation is quickly approaching. Looking back, I am so happy to have been able to attend all these meetings and learn so much. Thank you, council members, for allowing me to be a part of the council, and thank you for the potential future opportunities you have all given me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Garrett. Good luck.
Okay, we'll move on to action items now. I'm so sorry. 9A is a call for motion to approve payment in the amount of $132,137.40 to the Marshville Fire Company as per 2019 fire fund budget contingent upon receipt of their 2018 financial statement and audit. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Parker, and a second by Arlene Dreisbach, and can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Ms. Dreisbach.
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle.
Yes.
Ms. Larsson.
Yes.
Mr. Nae.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger.
Yes.[1720.41]
Motion passes eight-zero. 9B, call for motion to approve payment in the amount of $71,992.20 to Capitol Health EMS as per the 2019 EMS budget, fund budget contingent upon receipt of their 2018 financial statement and audit. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by.
Second.
And second by Mike Jaeger.
Who was the mover?
Mike Jaeger.
I was second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Parker. Sorry, I'm a fill-in tonight. And if we could have a roll call on it, please?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9C, call for motion to approve cosponsorship of the 2019 Memorial Day Parade with the Marshville Fire Company and approval of an $1,800 payment as budgeted.
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Bowers. And second by.
Ms. Larison.
Larison. Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Are we all going to walk together in this parade? Or is everybody just going to disperse and separate?
I won't be here. I already let them know I'll be in Arizona.
I'll be there. Last year, the council did walk together. I think most of them did. I know my knee's been bothering me, I can give it a try again. I'll try. Anyone else? Yeah, we do normally meet and I, well, I was going to make the announcement at the end, but we meet at the Presbyterian Church parking lot at 9:00 AM off of Triton Ave is where that parade begins. But, yeah, look forward to walking with everyone, if everyone can make it.
DeMarco will be taking my place.
Oh, don't worry. Have him carry the flag. Okay, 9D, this is the one that the mayor's requesting have extra money put in. I just have to ask you, Mayor, again, because I'm really confused. You're saying you have $1,000 that you've spent and you're asking for $1,000?
No, I'm saying if, if you would like me to organize it, I'd like some funding, otherwise someone else is going to have to organize it. And I said, in the past, we were able to do this, you know, hiring the balloon bounce the animal show, that type of thing, which comes out to $1,000. So, you know, I have no problem if you, I realize there's no money in the budget. You're marked for this, so if you would rather have someone else organize it, that's fine.
Well, when you turned the receipts in, it was in the budget, wasn't it? I mean, wasn't there $1,000 in there?
Yeah, but I don't believe this year the council has any money in the, in the budget for this.
No recreation. Could have sworn there was.
I thought that it was taken out. I don't believe so.
No, it wasn't. I don't think so.
Don't be mistaken, because honestly, I checked and I hate to admit it, but I used the draft budget, so. That's what I'm saying. If there's, if there's funding, I, you know, my family and I will step up. If there's no funding, someone else is going to have to do it. So I guess a clarification is in order.
I don't think we made any changes to that line. Do you have your budget?
Maybe it was only in, maybe it was only in the draft where it just had dots and no numbers.
Labor, Labor Day Parade?
Yeah, there was.
Having a Labor Day picnic?
Expenses. Labor Day Activities Fund was 500 and then I think you pulled money out of the Special Park Activities Fund is where you pulled the rest of it out of that, if I'm not mistaken. Because right now they're sitting in there 2,500 and then 500 in the Labor Parks, Labor Parks Activity.
Right. You see why I wanted to be sure? Because it used to be $2,000 earmarked for the Labor Day picnic.
That was, that was, huh? No, no, I think it was just on this one here. Yeah, that's because, well, I think what happened with that was it was, the Labor Day Picnic never had $2,000 up until National Night Out started doing theirs and all of a sudden it was bumped from 500 to, I think it was 2,000. I mean, if you're asking for 1,000, which is what you've been spending the past couple years, I don't see why there's a problem with that.
For four years, it's been in the budget for 2,000. Yeah, I'm saying I believe we can do it for $1,000. If council's okay with that, then we can do it.
Okay, so you're asking for $1,000.
Because that's, that's what it cost, you know, like I said, the past couple of years, so it should be the same amount.
We just put that in the motion?
Yeah, if you want to.
That would be great, Eileen. And I don't think you need, unless you want in the motion, typically we have the rain date also for the following Saturday. Oh, it's even in there?
It's in there.
Yeah.
So.
And the rain date, just for clarification, that's typically for the car show because, you know, the Labor Day is for Labor Day, but the people who get their cars ready, they still want to bring them out.
Oh, I see.
So how do you want to add, it's just the end, costs not to exceed 1,000? Is that okay? If we word it that way?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then we will do 9D.
And just for further clarification, what we'll try to do is ask the vendors who need to be paid to submit their, their request to the borough. That way it could all be taken care of in-house.
Okay. And why we're at it, Mayor, do you want to do this next year? I saw in your email, you're saying you would do it till the end of your term if you wanted to, if you want to, and we can let the council know?
I'm sure I can do it again.
Well, we'll, I'll just be more diligent and maybe the council will let you know in the beginning of the year in case you decide not to, but thank you. Okay. So 9D is a call for motion to approve the Marshville Labor Day Picnic to be held in Williamson Park on Monday, September 2nd, 2019, with a rain date of Saturday, September 9th, 2019, with a cost not to exceed $1,000 of expenditure.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the clarification, council.
Sure. And can we have a roll call on it, please?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Next motion is 9E, call for motion to accept the Borough and Library Annual 2018 Audit as previously presented by the auditing firm, Barbara Kane Thornton and Company LLP. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike Jaeger and second by Justin Bowers. Roll call, please.
A roll call on this?
Yeah, because it's money we did.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Next will be 9F, call for motion to approve the resolution authorizing the Borough Engineer to submit a Keystone Grant application for replacement of the library roof. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so it's moved by Danielle Larson and second by Eileen Dreisbach.
Do we know how much the grant is for?
It was circulated to council. I don't remember. It might say in the resolution.
I don't think there was an amount that was in there. No, there's no amount that was in there.
No amount?
No.
We do not, but I can get that for you.
Okay. I guess it's whatever we can get.
Yeah, well, we know the cost of the roof was, what, 200,000 was the estimate?
Right.
At least that.
Okay. Fair enough. I think it was like 175 or 150 if we did.
What?
At least that, John, right?
140, 150, I think is where he was. The guy that just did it, that was the number he kind of came.
Oh.
Wow. Was that slate or composite?
Slate.
Slate? Okay, cool. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Any other questions or comments on that motion for the library? All right. And if we can have a roll call on that, please?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9G, call for motion to accept the resolution PC 2019-01 of the Marshville Borough Planning Commission to declare the property located at 22 Delaware Avenue, Marshville, Pennsylvania as a blighted property. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Danielle Larson, second by Mike Jaeger. Any questions or comments on this motion? I have a roll call, please, when you're ready, Scott.
Sure, Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
No.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-one. Motion 9H, call for motion to accept resolution PC 2019-02 of the Marshville Borough Planning Commission to declare the property located at 1124 South Pennsylvania Avenue, Marshville, PA, as a blighted property. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Danielle Larson, second by Mike Jaeger. And a roll call, please, Scott.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
No.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-one. Motion 9I, call for motion to adopt an ordinance regulating short-term lodging facilities and establishing standards for such facilities situated within Marshville Borough. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Justin Bowers and second by Danielle Larson. Any questions or comments on this motion?
I think we beat this one up pretty good.
Okay. And if we could have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
No.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-one. Next motion, 9J, call for motion to authorize the DCED to conduct a study of the, should be Marshville Police Department. I would imagine, right, Scott, let me add that? Okay.
Sure.
All right, call for motion authorize the DCED to conduct a study of the police department. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Dave Nay, second by Ted Parker. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Yes, in my opinion, we haven't really gotten enough information. Dave Nay gave us several different communities that use this and I really don't think any of them are comparable to Marshville. And I would rather look into this further before we go into something like this, so I'd like to table the motion.
Well, just to answer that, Eileen, I would point out that.
Make a motion.
Motion's been tabled and seconded, so we have to do a call, roll call on the table.
Okay. I'm sorry, who was the mover on the table?
Eileen moved it.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Mr. Jaeger. Seconded. This is a motion to table 9J. So we'll do a roll call on the motion to table.
Yep, Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
This is a motion to table.
To table. Motion 9J.
9J. Ms. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Chronicle?
No.
Ms. Larison?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
No.
Mr. Parker?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion to table passes by five to three. Okay, that's the last motion. We're going to go, there's no unfinished business, so I don't believe, Scott, right? No new business? So under Borough officials, I'll just go over mine real quick and then I'll see if anybody else has anything. I already mentioned the Memorial Day Parade begins on nine o'clock on this coming Monday and they all line up at the Presbyterian Church starting at nine o'clock in the morning. I welcome all councils to walk together. That would be kind of nice. Pray for no rain that day, since we get it like, seems like every day. The second one, also just a reminder, Mr. Parker did mention it, that the June 11th agenda meeting was canceled due to the PSAB conference and that most of the council, I welcome many of us, so there won't be a quorum, will be at that conference in June, but we will have our regular meeting in June. Just real quick, we did the bench dedication at the senior center for the benches for the Salt family, Edgar Salt, and for the Honorable Judge Burns. The families were able to place the plaques on the benches that day. We locked out, it was a beautiful day. It rained the day before and the day after, but it was, it was a beautiful day that day. Just so everyone knows, because we want to thank everyone, there was a total of $6,452 that was raised by the families, friends, some of the businesses for that project, so no taxpayer dollars was used for that. The senior center was thrilled with it. The director was out there to speak with us about it, and they were so glad to partner with us. It was a nice little project. They said we can help out, any of their fundraisers, anytime to help them with some of their other projects, which is a nice thing we will look into doing. I also want to thank the Beautification Committee members, Eileen and Danielle for working with me, but also the tons of volunteers that organized, shopped, cooked, served, cleaned up, did whatever was asked to do in the fall time to collect that kind of money and get that done. The families were very emotional and very thrilled to get that done, so it was a nice addition, so thank you, everyone. I think that was it for me. Anyone else?
Yes, I just had a quick question. So this is the second year that we will have a full-time finance director. Are we going to have early budget meetings to discuss the budget? And if so, when are those planned?
I have my calendar in front of me.
So on. I believe we laid out a budget development calendar for 2020 to council. I believe it was distributed to you back in January, and it is the calendar we intend to follow through the end of the year unless council directs us otherwise.
So do you not remember the first official budget meeting that we're supposed to have?
I think the first presentation of the 2020 budget to council will be in September, just like it was last year, and we can have whatever council meetings council would like to have.
Well, we didn't have any dedicated budget meetings last year, so I would like to at least to have at least a dedicated, one or two dedicated budget meetings this year where the finance director and the borough manager are here. We could go through it.
Well, I believe we scheduled two days last year. Council used one, and council decided not to use the second one.
Correct.
And a third one was contemplated and was not used. Well, we had some sort of presentation, but you were not there, neither was the finance director.
Correct.
So that's not, I mean, you both created the budget, so you need to be there.
Well, we advertised it legally as a budget meeting, so we can call it whatever anybody wants, but it was a budget meeting.
Right, but you weren't, you were not there, and the finance director was not there.
Correct.
So if we had questions, we had to filter that through a resident, I believe, that was there.
No.
I don't know.
I'm just asking, since, you know, again, since we have a dedicated person, a dedicated finance person for the second year in a row, if we could have an actual budget meeting that's attended by the people that create the budget for our questions, because there seems to be a big issue with staffing and budgeting for our police department that I'm sure our residents are very concerned about, and we're getting, some of us are getting stymied at every turn to try to figure out how to fix it.
Sounds political.
So I would just ask that if September is going to be that first budget meeting that the borough manager and the finance director are there. Thank you.
Well, that budget presentation will be at a council meeting in September, but as I said, council can have as many budget meetings as you would like to have.
So you want, she wants a separate budget meeting off, off the day, so we're just gonna sit and you guys are gonna be there?
Yeah, we can have as many of those as council would like, just make a decision and let us know.
Well, I would like one at least, because like I said, we didn't get that last year.
Okay.
At least one.
Okay. We'll do that. We did have a sit-down at that table, just to remind you, but we'll do that.
Well, but again.
I get it. Well, I'll sit down there, have a little pow-wow. Anybody else?
Madam President?
Yes.
This question is for our borough manager. I'm starting to see some activity at, I think it's 32 Westbridge Street. I also saw on the Engineers Report that we have yet another final plan. Is this, now clearly, they're being sticklers, Keystone's being sticklers on this thing, but to your knowledge, is there anything that's keeping that project from moving forward?
Are we talking about the brewery?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure of the street address.
It's 32.
We've been through, I almost don't want to say how many plans.
Say it.
But I think it's like nine or 11 versions of plans.
Okay.
I know one of the most recent versions that came through just in the last week or two did receive conditional approval.
Good.
So there are some things to button up and to finalize, but most of that is on the applicant to provide.
Keystone's being sticklers on this, right?
I'm honestly, I think Keystone is handling this application just like any other application they've handled in the borough.
Thank you.
Anyone else for an announcement?
Yeah, I have two things. One, maybe either for the borough manager or solicitor, can you provide an update for the public on the house on Delmore Avenue with the zoning issue?
As far as the zoning issue, there, well, I can't address whatever Keystone is doing in terms of their current efforts on zoning code enforcement. As far as I know, there's been a cease and desist order issued with regard to, I mean, it's basically a recovery house. They tried to get a variance to allow it in the, in the R2 Residential District. They were turned down by the zoning hearing board. They never repealed. They just basically commenced operation. I believe that they had taken the position that because people in recovery are a protected class under federal law and considered disabled, that they could just go ahead and do that. We are in the midst of preparing a complaint, seeking various forms of relief, which we hope will result in, in the issuance of an injunction and hopefully be able to legally cease the operations at that address. That being said, it's an unusual piece of litigation. There are many, many outstanding issues which could arise during the course of it, depending on any number of variables. I anticipate we'll probably be in a position to file that case within the next week, week to 10 days, probably.
Thank you. And my second is, I know council got under packet a schedule for the proposed paving projects around town. Can we post that on our website so that, and would you give an overview of approximations of when that's gonna start actual paving?
As soon as I'm comfortable that that schedule is final, we will make it public.
Okay.
I was looking at the LERTA and Enterprise Zone map, and I was wondering what is considered an enterprise zone? The LERTA is just for tax help with new businesses, correct? What is the enterprise zone exactly?
The enterprise zone allows for a business to apply for certain various assistance programs, like a woman-owned business or minority-owned business. There are a number of programs at the federal and state, and even at the county level, that either an incoming business or an existing business within the enterprise zone would be eligible to apply for.
Okay, I noticed on the map that there was a zone at the end of Williamson Park. I believe that area is owned by the Bridge Commission currently?
You're talking about Bridge and Delmore?
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yes, that's Bridge Commission property.
Okay, how do we declare that a enterprise zone if we don't own it?
We don't own any of the.
Any of them.
Properties in the enterprise zone.
Okay.
That's the RDA. Is that?
What's that? Right.
It's not.
Right.
Yeah, they're not. Those three parcels from the Bridge Commission are not in the enterprise zone.
Say that name.
Those three parcels from the Bridge Commission, I don't believe are in the enterprise zone.
The orange, if you look at the map, the orange area is highlighted there between Delmore and what looks like Central Avenue, that end of Williamson Park.
Oh, well, that could be the, there's commercial properties along Bridge there, that front street.
Yeah, but they're, the highlighted area or the orange zone area is actually on the Williamson Park side between Central and Delmore.
I believe it goes all the way to the bridge, doesn't it? Because there's businesses there.
I believe it does.
No, the LERTA does, but I don't think the enterprise zone does.
I don't have the map in front of me, but I thought it did.
Yeah, I thought it was just the LERTA, I was not.
Right.
That goes to the businesses that are on the island park between Central and Park.
The. Radio phone, Danielle.
Sorry. Right here is what you're talk, right here is what you're talking about? Right there?
Oh, no. Wait.
Right there.
Madam President? Let me just.
Is that what you're talking about?
Aren't the lines still fluid at this point? We haven't finalized it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, because we don't know whether we're getting any addition to the enterprise zone, has been added to.
Remember, if I, if I can, the RDA is proposing to expand the boundaries of the enterprise zone beyond.
Right.
Beyond its current form. We don't know if or when that may happen at this point.
They just applied for that, so we don't even know if we're getting that. None of this is finalized.
Okay, that was my question. I didn't know if there was anything in the works.
That's not the boundary of the existing enterprise zone. That's what the RDA was proposing to expand it by.
Okay.
Right.
But that doesn't mean you're gonna get it, and that's just what they're.
It's not final yet.
Okay.
They said at the meeting, well, some of it overlapped.[1672.61]